We're right at seven o'clock, so I'll call tonight's city council meeting to order. And Jillian, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Erickson.
Here.
Councilmember Husnick.
Here.
Councilmember Valento.
Here.
Councilmember Roberts.
Here.
Mayor Bane.
Here. I'd like to invite everyone to rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance should apply to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Counsel, we have an agenda before you, and I would like to note the agenda was amended earlier today, and so just wanted to note that there is an additional item on the agenda for a 2025 budget discussion, and that will be a discussion in the discussion piece. No action taken this evening. With that, I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
A second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? And our agenda is approved. Our next item this evening is open forum. Open forum is any interested parties' opportunity to address counsel on a topic of your of your choice. I will say, this evening, we do have a hearing on the agenda under item 7A, consideration of the property at 23620 Jensen Avenue. That is a hearing, however, it is not a public hearing. We will not be taking public comment during that portion. We will have an opportunity for the property owner to address counsel if they choose, but if you are here from the public and you want to speak specifically to that topic, this would be your time to do so. So anybody that signed up for open forum this evening? Thank you. Jamie Deichman.
Thank you.
If I could have you state your full name and address for the record, that'd be great.
Jamie Deichman, 56 Seventh Street Northwest. And will you be taking questions during the budget section or during the improvements portion of the meeting?
We won't be taking public comment, but now's a great time to kind of get your questions on the record, and we'll try to address them at that time.
If it was going to be readdressed, I didn't want to jump the guy.
Oh, no. Now's a great time to get that feedback.
So I think you must have heard this 100 times. Budget this year, everybody's, you know, still reeling from inflation, and if I read all the numbers correctly, something on the order of $800,000 is the estimate for the improvements for the median and roundabout. If we're going to spend that kind of money, I'd much rather see a dedicated right turn lane from Broadway onto 61 South instead of Mulch to alleviate the traffic problems there, and then possibly a redesigned pedestrian crossing. There's been a couple of incidents in that space. And then just further on that, if we're going to keep adding trees to medians where they the trees die because it's just not a good spot for them, there's not enough soil to sustain those plants, we need to look at A, less expensive plants, and B, something that can stand up or be easily replaced. There's a lot of missing trees, and we just keep throwing new ones after dead ones, and that's all I've got. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jill Green.
Hello. Jill Green, 6349 207th Street North. I'm very terrible at public speaking, so please be forgiving. I just came to give you guys a couple of updates on the senior center because you haven't had them, and I was super excited today because of all the things that happened over the weekend, and people didn't have time in the office to hear it, so.
Excellent.
They asked me to email, and I couldn't do it because there was too much to say in the email, so I am here to tell you guys. So with Christmas approaching, people, I don't know if they get super giving or what, but I had a lady reach out to me last week. Her name was Kristen May, and she had bought some of those Domino's fundraiser cards, and she messaged me and asked me if I wanted them for the seniors, and they order pizza at every 500 tournament. And so I was like, that'd be amazing, like, thank you. And so she gave us that, and then another group last week called me and asked me if there's any seniors that wanted real Christmas trees because they want to donate them and deliver them to their houses.
That's amazing.
So that they all have real Christmas trees. And then today, when we were there, we had just taken out the Christmas tree, and we're starting, we do a different theme every year on the tree, so this year it's silver bells. So we were getting all the stuff ready for it, and this family came in, and they had said, oh, we're too late. And I was like, for what? They have a 10-foot Christmas tree, real one, that they want to give to the senior center. I know. I'm so excited. So we're going to put it outside, and we're going to have our first outdoor tree, and they are so excited, they are so unbelievably happy about this, and I was pretty much in tears because people are so generous, and I just, nothing makes me more happy than seeing them all smile, and I, I just can't think of a better thing, and it was the best. So I had to share it all with you guys because that's big news.
Excellent. Thank you.
So that's it. All positives.
Thank you. Thank you. Is it Tom Crowe's?
No, I don't have.
Oh, building, you're here for later. Excellent. Steve Shingin.
Steve, Steve Shingin, 7760 214th Street, Forest Lake. I tried to put my application in for the warming house, and I didn't know we had to do it online or anything because I've been doing it for eight years, and I just, they usually notify me, and so I found out that I had to put it online, but trying to figure it out, I can't figure it out. I contacted Kyle Young, and I tried to call him, and I stopped in for the last two weeks, and he called me today and said that they had six applicants already, and that they were full. And I've did it for eight years, and I was never contacted it, and trying to figure it out how to do it, I couldn't figure out how to do it online. I mean, I figured out most of it. There's some, I don't, I don't know who filled out, who made that application or anything, but in one, in one spot, it says, what's your, what's your required, I think they mean salary, but they wrote down surlie, so I don't, I don't know. I don't, I don't know, and I called Dave this morning, I only called Dave once, and I know, I'm sure he's busy, but I only contacted him once, but I don't know, Kyle said it's up to Dave who gets hired or not. So I'm just here to ask Dave, do you want me to work, or got a job for me there, or what?
Maybe we can address that tomorrow, tomorrow morning?
Why not give you a call tomorrow, Steve?
Give me a call, give me a call tomorrow so I can fill out the application?
Yep, I'll talk to Kyle and see what's going on.
Okay, okay. Like I've been doing it for eight years, everybody sees me around the park, I've been a park rancher for eight years, and I didn't know nothing about this, and I've been trying for the last two weeks.
Thank you. Kim Youngbauer.
I'm here for number seven, about the Jensen Avenue property.
Yeah. If you, would you like, and do you want to speak in open forum, or were you just signing in?
Well, I'll just come up.
Okay.
Guys, I don't think we all come up because we're just.
Yeah, because we. Sure. Okay. And so let's take you one at a time, though, and we'll have kind of name and address for the record, and happy to hear your feedback.
Kim Youngbauer, 23830 Jensen Avenue North, Forest Lake. And we're all up here because we've been dealing with this property for I don't know how many years, and it's just getting worse and worse. I mean, we don't even know who lives there. I think it's like they got campers in the back, they got tents up, they got kids running around, and I mean, it's, it's just, it's a hot mess, and we're just really hoping, we've had to look at this nightmare for a long, long time, and we're just really hoping that somebody will finally do something about it.
Understood. Thank you.
I'm Terry Penison. I live at 9355 239th Street North, and just so you know, for those of you that haven't seen this property, it's a dead-end road, it's a mile long. Jensen is where you enter. I'm on 239th, which is where you take a curve, now it changes names. So I have to drive, it's not next to me, but I drive past it in and out of my development every time. And I think the very first formal complaint that I'm aware of that came into the city was in 2015. So we're going on 10 years, and it only has gotten worse over that time. Becky and I have, during that time, had been in contact with Al Newman from the fire department, who assured us that he was handling this rather than take it to the courts, it was going to be taken care of. That never happened, it went to the courts, it's been in the court system for years now, in and out, it was in foreclosure, and during that time, there was unknown water breakage in the lower level of the house that flooded, that was never dealt with. So there's mold growing in the house. There's been two fires right close to each other, that damage was never repaired. The city repaired some of it, but all they did was put some plywood up so it's not, you couldn't, it wasn't a gaping hole into the house. Nothing else was ever repaired. Then, like Kim said, there's been campers, people living in the campers, not just campers out there, people living out there with extension cords strung out. Where are they using the facilities? They don't have, so there's, who knows, where their waste is going into, where we all have wells, you know? There's piles of garbage because they don't have garbage service, so it's, everything's just piled up with a tarp over it. You know, and I, and we came to the city, I looked up, in May of 2019, as a group like this, and were assured it would be looked into. Councilmember Beister asked for some photos, I sent her the photos, she said, that's horrible, and here we are, it's only gotten worse. So I know, I'm thankful that, to the, to the new incoming council members that are looking at it anyway, and hopefully taking it seriously. We have our doubts, though, because we've been told many times that, oh, it's going to be this date, and that date comes and goes, and then there's this date, and that date comes and goes. So hopefully, are we able to stay in during that discussion?
Yep.
We just can't speak on it then?
Correct.
Okay, all right. So hopefully, there'll be some, some sort of, not a resolution tonight, I get, but a direction, and more than just lip service, because that, I feel like that's what we've gotten for almost 10 years now, and it gets, it gets disheartening, so. And I feel like if this were on Broadway Avenue, or, you know, somewhere visible, we would, this would, this would have happened a long time ago, would have been done, but we're out in the country, nobody cares, so. Yeah, we're the city. We pay city taxes, but we, yeah.
Hi.
Hi.
I voted for you.
Yay.
My name is Pat Beaver, and I live at 23760 Jensen Avenue North, Forest Lake, Minnesota. I worked as a nurse for 42 years and paid my debt, buying that house, watched my children grow up, got the news that my son didn't make it back from the war. That is my home, and I, 35 years, I've planted flowers. You guys would love my yards. It's my home, it's my beautiful home, and when we moved out there, it was the most beautiful place. I watched these people's children grow up, I baked cookies for them. It's like a big family, and it's with anything else, you know, what is the rights of the majority of the people? Few people can make the majority miserable because they're protected. I don't think, I called to see if somebody could park their van or their motorhome in my driveway to stay for a month, and was told no. I'm a citizen, I abide by the rules. I didn't do it. There's three motorhomes in there, campers, cats running all over, dogs, kids, chickens, there's chickens there now. The garage burned off years ago, the whole garage in the front, so all this plywood going into that place. I think we, as taxpayers, have paid two or three times to have people come up and fill dumpsters up to get them out of there. Everybody wants to help them. Help yourself. I mean, we can't do it for them, and our rights are being so violated. I feel like, I feel like a loser citizen here, you guys. You know, my home, my beautiful home, is becoming a ghetto, and I'm sure you guys all feel like that, too. When I drive by there, I'm an older senior citizen. Come out, drive down 235th, drive down Jensen Avenue, tell me if you buy my house. I'm at that age where I'm gonna, the stairs are getting a bit much for me, and it's ruining my property value. It's ruining all of our property values, and we're not mean people, we're nice people, we'd give you the shirt off our back, but we're just so tired of it. We fought it the right way, and like that, what was that movie? I've had enough. I'm mad as hell, and I can't take it anymore. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Becky Mikers. I live at 23833 Jensen Avenue North. I'm on the same road as all these wonderful neighbors of mine. I want you to see my face, you get a lot of my emails, you know what I have to say, you know how I feel. Unfortunately, our whole neighborhood isn't here tonight for other obligations, their children, I left my children at home because they're sick of hearing me complain about the house down the street. My husband's here, another neighbor that's a little too shy to be up here, which is fine. I personally don't like being up here either. You know my concerns, you've read them, I appreciate you all trying to start to do something. I hope that what you say will happen. Abby, you and I have talked a little bit about, you said it's, you feel bad that it looks bad. It's not just the way it looks anymore. It's the children, it's the whole environment, the animals, we are now, we now have a cat that we didn't know we had a cat, that is living back by our shed just for shelter, looking for food. We aren't cat people, we have a dog, so. Just some really odd stuff, and like Terry said, 10 years, we've been here 10 years. We were here for both fires, and the second fire was the house, the first was the shed, and when the second fire happened, if I remember correctly, Al Newman said that the house was inhabitable. At that point, everybody moved out. There was smoke damage, water damage, and there was the frozen pipes the year prior, and nobody lived there. It was vacant, which it should have been, and it should have been addressed then. Unfortunately, it wasn't, and they slowly started moving back in. These are health concerns for those little kids that live there. I wouldn't let my kids live there, I wouldn't even let my dog live there. The fact that there's people living there breaks my heart. And then unfortunately, they had one of the sons living in the motorhome who needs, well, isn't there anymore, but needed medical help as well, mental health help, and being mooned on the way to work from him, and him talking about our neighborhood not helping him, it's sad, and nobody should be living like that. So I appreciate you all for reading my emails, I appreciate you for taking the time to come out to the property. I don't know if it's, if it's something that we can have or look at, but I'd like to see the soil samples that you guys took, if there is anything that we need to be concerned about that affects our personal wells with us all being on a well out there, and I hope to see some changes, otherwise you get to see me again, or you'll hear from me again. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I think that's the end of everybody that has signed up. Is there anybody else here that hasn't spoken that would like to? And Jillian, do we have anybody online?
No attendees indicating they wish to speak.
Okay. With that, we will close open forum and bring the agenda back to council. Counsel for your consideration tonight is consent agenda items 6A through 6M. I'll entertain a motion to, a motion to approve or any changes.
I'll move to approve consent agenda items 6A through M.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? And consent agenda is approved. Moving on to our regular agenda, our first item this evening, 7A, is to consider adoption of resolution in order to correct or remove the hazardous building at 23620 Jensen Avenue North in Forest Lake. We're going to start with a presentation from Amanda to provide information. We'll do an initial round of questions that council may have. We will then open it up. If the property owner is here and would like to speak, we will certainly provide that opportunity, and then we'll bring back to council for decision. And Amanda, all yours when you're ready.
Hey Abby, it's this guy, right? Yep. Thanks. Good evening, Your Honor, Council. So tonight, we are here to talk about a 463 action for 23620 Jensen Avenue. And if you recall, actually, just about a year ago, I looked up my, my dates for what I did a year ago, and we did a 463 action for a burnt-out house in another part of the city. This is using that same tool. So first, I'm going to walk through just a reminder of what a 463 action is. So a 463 action is a tool that we can use under state statute to repair or remove hazardous buildings. The city has the ability to require that the property owner either correct the hazardous conditions or require that they remove, remove the hazardous building. So the first step is that council needs to receive an official report. In the packet tonight, that is your official report along with this presentation. The report must provide facts that make the building a hazardous building. In your packet, there is a inspection report by the interim city building official that declares the building a hazardous building. Just for clarification, a hazardous building becomes that because it's either has inadequate, excuse me, inadequate maintenance, dilapidation, there's some, been some type of physical damage, or, you know, often a fire hazard as well. So after you receive all those, those, that packet of information, and in a few minutes, I'll ask you to officially enter those all into the record, then you have to approve a resolution and an order that's also in your packet. That resolution and order is based on the official report, and that will require the property owner to correct or remove the hazardous conditions or demolish, raise or remove the building. I'll get into a little bit more detail about what we're asking for tonight in regards to that, but the order also needs to include a reasonable time to complete the work. Assuming that council approves that order and resolution tonight, that order needs to be served on the owner, just like you would serve any other complaint in a litigation matter. So they have 20 days to serve an answer if they object, or if they disagree with the facts that are presented in the resolution order, and then, you know, the attached documents. If they do answer, then we would be in a traditional litigation route where we would need to prove out facts in court to be able to move forward with the 463 action. But if they do not answer, and then the owner does not complete whatever the work is that we are requiring by the deadline, then I would file our order officially with the court saying, court, the city needs to go in and essentially demo this building. So while a property owner can be instructed to correct, fix conditions, or remove a building, a city is not in the business of fixing up a building. Our only remedy is really to demolish and remove the hazardous structure. Occasionally, I've seen a court give an owner more time if they show up, but usually, they just say, you know, go do what you need to do. So then we would perform that, or it said this, that we, we don't correct hazards, we really just demolish or remove the building, and all of the costs related to the 463 action, so that includes my time now, all the way through to the cost to demolish the building, do, do get assessed against the property. So let's talk about the specific property that we're here for tonight. 23620 Jensen is a single-family residential property. The owner is currently Jonathan E. Strami. He, there is a notice of mortgage foreclosure that was filed against the property in August. It was supposed to go to share sale in September, it was extended to October and has now been extended to January, so it's not entirely clear when or if that share of sale will happen. And in a foreclosure process, just so you understand, they have six months after the share of sale to redeem the property. So that's sort of, from a timing perspective, that's just helping understand about how long, you know, assuming the share of sale actually happens on January 28th, about how long after that they would have to redeem the property, and then assuming that the property owner does not redeem the property, they would have to be evicted. So realistically, after this January 28th date, assuming it sticks for a share of sale, you're probably looking at about nine, nine to 12 months to actually remove the individuals from the property. So now I want to talk about a timeline of events at 23620 Jensen. This does not include everything that was spoken about in the open forum this evening. Tonight, we are focusing on the structure. There are admittedly additional code violations on the property, so exterior storage, vehicles, all kinds of things. That's not what this action is about, this action is about the, the building, the house. So on March 18th of 2019, the property did experience a significant structure fire that destroyed a majority of the attached garage, and it also caused smoke damage to the remaining portions of the house. The fire chief went to the property multiple times over the years to ask the owner to properly, you know, fix the hole in the side of the, of the wall and the roof that was caused by, by the fire. As was mentioned, there was some plywood put up, but there was not actual correct materials put up to fix the, the damage that was caused by the fire. October 23rd of this year, the interim building official conducted an exterior inspection of the property. At that time, it was decided not to do an interior inspection, those would typically require an administrative warrant, and given the ongoing situations with the property, we felt like it was best to see where, where we could go with just an exterior inspection, and if needed, come back for an interior inspection that, again, would likely, in this situation, require a warrant to be able to go into the home. Based on just that exterior inspection of the property, however, the interim building official was able to declare the, the house a hazardous building. So there was enough damage that he could see from the exterior of the home to determine that it was no longer safe. And so what he found was that the house, the home structural components had been compromised first due to the fire, but then also due to the fact that there wasn't adequate repairs made to the home, so the house has essentially, has essentially been exposed to the elements over the past five years that have caused additional deterioration, structural damage and rot to the remaining structure. On November 15th, we did mail a copy of that said inspection report and a notice of this meeting to the property owner, in addition to posting a copy at the residence. So there's just going to be a few photos, because photos help everybody understand what we're kind of talking about in terms of the significance of the damage of the property. So in this photo, you can see the, the damage to the roof structure and the use of the plywood as a covering, although it is not, obviously, it does not protect against the elements, it does not do any of the things that it would actually need to do to be a correct exterior material, exterior material. This is another picture of part of the burnt-out roof, and you can see how, you can kind of see in this picture how the trusses go into the house, and there isn't really a way to prevent rodents, again, elements, all of that from going through those trusses into the home. Same thing in this photo. This is showing an additional location where there has moisture and other elements have been allowed to get into the home through that, you can kind of see that hole there on the side, as well as what looks to be some mold growing on the side of the plywood. The property does also have a deck that is also not structurally sound, so in the, in the inspector's report, the deck was another item that was also talked about needing to be removed. And then this is another example, you can see where the gutter is going into the siding there and is essentially allowing additional mold, mold, excuse me, and water intrusion into the side of the home. There's additional photos in your packet, but this is just sort of a, a flavoring of the type of damage that exists at the home right now. So the, what I'm recommending to council is, if the property owner is present, to allow him to speak. This is not a public hearing, but I would still recommend that he does that. So maybe we'll start there. Do we want to check and see if the property?
Is the property owner here this evening? And is online? No, okay.
Then I would ask that council officially receive the packet and all exhibits into the record.
Motion to accept the packet and all related exhibits into the record. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye. Oppose? And motion carries.
So then, and I'll, there'll be an official motion on the. So then, and I'll, there'll be an official motion on the next page for you all, but this last part is adopting the order and the resolution, and so I want to talk about this particular order and resolution. So sometimes, you tell a property owner, "You got to remove the building. This is not savable." Example was last year's fire building, right? There was almost nothing left. In this situation, it's possible that the property could be salvaged if somebody wanted to spend all of the time, money, and energy to do extensive repairs throughout. So there is a pathway where the owner could correct all of the hazardous conditions. Because of that, the order and resolution allow the property owner to either repair, replace, remove hazardous conditions, all of the hazardous conditions that are identified in the building official's report. So that's everything from the burnt fire problems, to the rotting deck, to the, you know, water intrusion issues, and then there was a few other photos around other damage to the exterior of the building. So it would need to be, every single thing that the building official identified as a problem, all of those things would need to be fixed, and then the building official would have to come back out and would have to certify that the building is no longer a hazardous building. So the property owner can do that, or the property owner can demolish the building and remove it from the property. Either way, whichever pathway the property owner were to select, that, those actions must be done by April 30th of 2025. And the reason that we've given him that long, or are proposing that length of time, is because we're coming into winter, and so if there is the desire to try to fix a building, that would give them additional time to do so. We are required under the statute to give reasonable time. This is a little bit of an arbitrary date that was selected. The other piece of information that we used to select the date was Minnesota has a cold weather shut-off, you know, timeframe where utilities and things like that can't be shut off on a property, and that starts October, it's October 15th or something, but it runs through April 30th. So this was the other reason for that date, is it essentially isn't part of that kind of winter deadline timeline. If the property owner does not do all of the repairs and get the building essentially decertified by the building official, or does not completely demolish and remove the building by April 30th, then essentially, then the city would step in, execute this order, and we would go in, and we would demolish the building. We would not be trying to fix it. So that is all of the information that I have. I'm now available for questions, and then I can move to what the motion would need to look like.
Thank you, Amanda. Let's open it up. Counsel, questions that we may have for Amanda or staff? We have the inspector here as well, if we have questions. Any questions?
Here being, can I just note something for the record? Tonight, it was brought up that there were multiple violations on the property. I do want to reference, as Amanda had indicated, the 463 is only one of the actions the city is taking. So we do, we have sent notice, again, that certified notice and posted the property for all other zoning code violations, which includes trash, unchallenged storage, and inoperable or unlicensed vehicles. We do have quotes to remove all of the trash and all of the personal property which would need to be stored. So we have given them timeframe sometime a little bit later this month. I don't remember exactly the date that we'll go in. If they don't remove all of their trash and personal property, we'll start removing trash from the property. The vehicles are a little bit trickier. We're just having trouble trying to find a tow company and an impound that wants to kind of work with these nuanced situations. So that's something that, they are a little bit of a less concern as some of the trash and those sorts of things, not to say that it's not of a concern. We did, when we were on the property, we did look. There is enough personal property and trash that's blocking all of the entrances and exits to the RVs, so we don't believe that anybody is living in them at that time. And then I also wanted to know, we did not do a soil sample report on the property. That isn't something that we would do to verify these general nuisance complaints, but I just want to state those things for the record.
Thank you.
I have a couple of process questions. Your memo and kind of packet talks about an appeal process. My understanding, though, we're not the appeal body, is that right? If there were an appeal, who's the appellate body, or who hears that?
The court.
Okay.
So what would, assuming that you approve this-
District?
Yes, district court. So it would be Washington District Court.
Okay.
Or Washington County.
And so outside of, there's been some action on this property, I believe, that was on, kind of, in the, on the criminal side? It's not, is it, it's not that same path, it's district court path?
Correct. And so that's a criminal citation. This is still a civil action that a city gets to take, so it would, same courthouse, but, you know, completely different.
Different court.
Yeah. Civil versus criminal.
And then, I appreciate that there's neighbor interest in this process. I also appreciate that we have given the property owner a timeline. What would you expect, if any, as far as updates to counsel or public updates between now and April 30th? Is there anything that would come before counsel? What does that look like? I just want to set expectations of what people will know what's happening between now and April 30th.
So the only indication would be if the property owner were to reach out and want to communicate with staff, or, you know, depending upon what work they need to do, they might need a building permit, or a demo permit, or whatever, and so, you know, some sort of a permit, and so then that would be a touch point. Otherwise, really, it's April 30th, staff goes out there, is the building done? Well, and we would know, right? Because the building official would have signed off. Is the building demolished? No, and move forward. I think, given the foreclosure posture of the property, and, you know, what staff has experienced to date, interactions with the property owner, and some of the interactions at the court level with the criminal case, I'm not sure that it's realistic that they're going to be doing the work that needs to be done on the property, regardless of the amount of time that's given to them. I think it's reasonable to assume that April 30th, or shortly, you know, at the next council meeting thereafter, there would be an update from staff letting counsel know that we are moving forward with the demolition, that the city is moving forward.
Understood. And then also, just to be clear, so we will be asked to take action tonight in a resolution. That is the final resolution. There isn't another resolution that would come before us for demolition, is that correct?
No. This would be it.
This is your only.
This, okay.
Yeah. And to that end, assuming that that's what happens, you know, in May of 2025, where the city is actually demoing the property, at that point, whatever is sort of remaining on the property would also be getting cleaned up as well, just as part of that, removing all the hazardous conditions, we would just encompass that all in our demolition cleanup, and all that would get assessed to the property.
Understood. The very last point, statement that you made is also just what I wanted to say, is if I'm watching this and I'm thinking, "Gosh, this sounds like it's a really expensive process. What happens? Who covers this?" Can you just talk through the abatement process, or what gets included in those abated costs?
Yes. So everything, as I mentioned, for this 463 action, everything gets assessed against the property. So, again, my time, any sort of abatement work that needs to be done, if we raise the building, all of that is going to be assessed against the property. As far as the exterior storage or the stuff, if that, you know, if that's going to be continuing on its own path, sort of concurrently with this one, eventually, they'll probably meet at that faded May 2025 timeline, but what, so whatever hasn't been cleaned up from an exterior perspective, will probably meet in May. But in the interim, any abatement actions that are taken to the exterior storage, those are also assessed against the property. And so eventually, those will get paid. In a situation where you have a home in foreclosure, and so you know there's going to be some turnover and some change in ownership, it's going to be important that, as staff, we are assessing those costs frequently instead of annually, so that way, we don't miss our windows of opportunity to collect on, you know, the, basically, the current mortgage company before it would potentially roll over to a new buyer. But that is something that I'm used to in other situations, and so we do a pretty good job of, you know, every 60 days assessing, that kind of a thing. And in that case, that's going to go before the counsel to be approved, because generally, you assess your charges once a year, right? You assess your unpaid fees. This is not that way. We would be assessing on a rolling basis.
Counsel, my question.
Amanda, you mentioned the foreclosure, the share of sale situation, nine-to-12-month window. Like, how would that, that potentially would delay this April 30th or May?
No, because that, and that's why I want to do this now, is if the property changes hands, that's sort of, frankly, not my problem, because we've done this well. He is clearly the owner. The share of sale has not happened. He is the owner. That they filed a notice that they might eventually do a share of sale, okay, but that doesn't change this. That does change wanting to make sure that we have everything assessed to the property as soon as possible, so we can get paid, like, on that share of sale, right? If they have it in January, I want us to get paid for anything that we would be owed from here until January, and then rolling after that.
The question on timing, reasonable time, I guess I would like to ask the neighbors, their comfort level on this April 30th. I mean, if it, we have the ability to move it up, but you people have to live next to it, and so you've done it for 10 years, but are you comfortable with that timeframe? Or would you like to see that moved up to a more closer, tighter date range?
Nine years ago. I don't know. I guess we lived within this long. If we could get it abated, it just gives us some hope. Do you hear any others? Want to move it up tomorrow?
It's probably a tough question to put up.
And, you know, there's a lot of stuff. If you make it too soon, then there's a chance they'd come back and say, "Well, you didn't give me enough time," and then we start over again, so, yeah. Let's be kind.
And then the other question, this might be more for Abby, I don't know. As far as picking up the trash or taking care of that, that is a separate item, but that's already, that's going to happen, or is that a motion as well that we need to make?
Nope, that is not. That's administratively being happened. So with the new ordinance you passed earlier this year, we have a system in place to do administrative abatements. They were noticed of the trash, the personal property storage, there's a difference out there. There's sometimes hard to tell, but, and we do have a contractor that's on standby to do that work, so we'll start doing it in increments, the first being get all trash off the property. I will say, it's a pretty hefty quote to remove everything, so the hope is that we can, some action might spur the property owner to take some action on their own, but we have enough right now that I, I don't remember the exact date, and I could look it up in just a few minutes, like, the middle of this month, maybe, at the most.
December 16th.
December? Is that what you said?
December 16th.
I'd rather look. Regardless, within a couple weeks, and a month at most from the notice, maybe 16th, we gave them 30 days, we'll be out there, starting to remove stuff at their expense, so.
No, one caveat to that is, like anybody, right? People can tell us to get off their property, and then we would have to come back, we'd have to get an administrative warrant to be able to come back and continue to do that abatement. So potentially, if the property owner says, "Get off my property," we do have to stop. We'll go get the warrant to be able to continue to remove the stuff. And garbage, we can throw, but personal property, under state law, we have to hold for a period of time for the person to be able to collect their belongings. Likewise, with the junk vehicles, those have some salvage sale value, and so those also have to be stored for a while, which just makes it a little bit trickier.
Do we have a, is it, does it go into a storage facility, like, third-party storage facility?
So, again, with the vehicles, we haven't been able to retain third-party services to tow and safely store. With the third-party trash junk removal, that third party would store in a, like, an ancillary storage pod or storage unit. They'd incur those costs until the time has lapsed, that we no longer have to store it, and then they would bill us for that cost. Understood.
That, if we are asked to leave the property, is that request the judge that usually granted to go back onto the property, is that normally a pretty easy yes, go back?
Yeah.
Timeframe, is that week delay, month delay?
I would, two weeks, a week to two weeks.
Okay.
Counsel, any other questions?
So on your screen is the motion that I would be looking for. If you are comfortable approving the resolution and order as it's currently written with the April 30th, 2025 date.
I'll make motion that we approve resolution to, in order to correct or remove a hazardous building at 23620 Jensen Avenue North in Forest Lake.
Is a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? I just, thank you to the neighbors for being here and providing feedback. I know this has been a very long process, and I hope there's a timeline, timeframe here that's fair to the property owner, but also give some resolution to everybody, so we appreciate you being here this evening. With that, any other discussion items? Hearing none? All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, and motion carries. Okay, let's move to our second agenda item this evening, which is consideration of cannabis ordinance, and also Amanda.
Yep. More of my voice, sorry. All right. Let's see. Anything? Do you want me to replug it in? Same. Same, same dog and pony show. Are you guys seeing it on your screen? Yes. Okay, because it's not popping up on the phone, which I think is, it's there, so. You guys are good? Okay. Okay, thank you, counsel, Your Honor. So we've talked about cannabis a lot in the last two years. I will not go through all of the legislative changes as we have talked about them ad nauseam. I will quickly run through the business types, just as a quick reminder. We'll talk about the current city cannabis ordinances, and then we'll talk about the proposed use ordinance. So this is the cannabis zoning ordinance. This did go before the planning commission at their last meeting as well. So just a reminder, cannabis businesses, we're talking about these micro and mezzo businesses where you can do everything from growing, manufacturing, to selling and allowing onsite consumption, retail shops, that's what it sounds like. You're selling it to the public, cultivator, you're growing it, manufacturing it, you're processing it. Wholesaler, you're somewhere, you're a middleman somewhere. The testing facility, you're testing the product. Event organizer, it's a license. It's not really a business location. You know, it's somebody who's going to be getting a license to do a cannabis event for up to four days, is what the license allows them to do. There's a cannabis delivery service, and then there's also the medical cannabis combination license, where you can sell for medical and for personal. Eventually, the hemp-derived THC products will be licensed by OCM. That remains to be, the date is in flux on when that will happen. I would anticipate potentially sometime late 2025, early 2026. Right now, there, you just register.
Is there a date to announce the date? Or is it in flux, as you said?
Is there a date to announce the THC stuff?
No, the date on when those licenses are expected. Like, we were originally thinking December, or January 2025.
Yeah.
Do we have a date for a new date, or?
We don't have a date for a new date. The last that I was told was, "Oh, we're really close." And I asked my source at OCM, and I said, "What does that really mean, though?" And he couldn't tell me. So they're still working, if you remember, they're doing that social equity applicant pre-license.
There is also just a lawsuit filed by some of those social equity applicants against OCM, so that is now pending as well, which will probably further delay the social equity licensing.
One of my reasons to ask that question is, just trying to understand, what's the lead-up time that counsel needs, or the city needs in advance of those dates?
To be safe, we should have this on the books, because, you know, ideally by January 1, because our moratorium expires January of 2025, and so we just don't really want any lapse. But from a practical perspective, if there's no licenses being issued, there's no businesses that can run, you know, that can open, it's, it's sort of a, I don't know, academic exercise.
Beyond the, beyond the action tonight, though, is this the last step that's needed, or are there, are we expecting additional cannabis-related action that counsel needs to take? That's what I was-
Great question. You will have one more. So this is the, this is the zoning ordinance, and then at the December 9th meeting, right? Some- December 9th, yeah. The December 9th meeting, you'll be passing the registration ordinance. It's fairly boilerplate, there's not a lot of jazz on that one, depending upon one decision that you make tonight. So that will get passed in, on the January, or excuse me, the December 9th meeting.
Understood, okay.
Okay, just a quick reminder about those hemp-derived edibles. They're the ones that are legal on a federal level versus cannabis, which is illegal federally, which really drives all of the analysis from that point forward. Stores that have a liquor license are permitted to sell the THC beverages by right. Stores that have an on-sale liquor license are allowed to permit onsite consumption of the THC beverages. There's been a little bit of confusion around that. And so I just wanted to make it clear, those are not really something that we will be regulating because they're governed by their liquor licenses for the beverages. There's the intent that like, smoke shops potentially will be able to sell the edible products by right, but that isn't in the current tobacco statute right now. Again, just a quick reminder, the maximum number of licenses to be issued before July of 2026. And of course, this is, you can only have as many standard licenses as you have social equity licenses. So as Jolene mentioned, there is a lawsuit right now, but for, by a group of social equity applicants. So if they issue no social equity applicant licenses, they can issue no regular licenses. Currently, you have two ordinances on the book. One is an interim ordinance that's just prohibiting the cannabis uses right now while we're figuring out what we want our actual structure to look like. And then we also have an ordinance that prohibits the use of cannabis in public places. The statute does technically prohibit cannabis use in public places, but it was not written to be enforceable by the police. So cities put in, most cities have put in this standard ordinance to be able to make it a misdemeanor, petty misdemeanor. The previous direction that we had from counsel was that you wanted to keep the registration process with the city. If you recall, the reason to keep the registration with the, registration process with with the city is that you are able to collect the registration fees. The, the required, like what the city has to do has changed quite a bit. And so all that really is required is annual compliance check on, some, very similar to a tobacco or a liquor license where it's making sure that underage people aren't being sold the product. That's essentially the only sort of ongoing obligation with registration. The other reason that most cities want to keep the registration process is if they want to limit the number of those retail mezzo or micro businesses. You cannot limit those if you do not keep the registration process at the city level. Last we talked, you were not interested in limiting the number of those. But if you ever wanted to in the future, it would be really difficult to sort of claw the pieces back to be able to do that. The other direction from counsel was that you weren't really looking for a lot of additional regulations and roadblocks. There is a lot of robust regulation at the state level around how these businesses have to operate. And so that wasn't something that the counsel was generally looking to add, add to. So we're going to walk through the cannabis use ordinance. It's not like almost every word except for the really boring parts. Okay, so definitions, the way that this ordinance is set up is uses versus businesses. And the reason for that is the, these mezzo and micro businesses can do everything. But you're not going to want them to be able to do everything in the same zoning district. So from a practical perspective, they might be allowed to cultivate and manufacture marijuana. But we know that those are things that can be smelly and have some, you know, public nuisance components that doesn't make them a good fit in the downtown area. Whereas a retail shop would work down there, a mezzo can be just a retail shore, shop or, you know, have a retail component. Or potentially, there might be some desire to have some sort of onsite consumption in essentially like a cannabis cafe. Again, that could be a good fit in the downtown, but that's not really going to work in your industrial park. So to understand, to to reflect the way that these businesses are actually being used, we split the year use table out by use versus by business type, which meant that we had to create some definitions to fill in those blanks because OCM does not have definitions for the actual activities. They just have definitions and then they don't even have definitions for all the businesses. They only put in like two, I don't know why. So you're, we have the definitions for indoor cultivation, manufacturing, outdoor cultivation and retail sales to allow us to be able to create a use table that talks about those things. In your use table that you probably saw in your packet, I have everything as an interim use right now. I will tell you, this is, this is a somewhat business unfriendly, frankly. There is going to be a desire for businesses to have this as a conditional use permit where it runs forever with the land versus an interim use permit where it has a date specific that it ends. The reason that I am recommending this in the current iteration of the ordinance is because we just do not know what this industry is really going to look like. And I'm concerned that potentially where we think we want these uses, we might be wrong. And if we give out multiple conditional use permits, that lives forever. There isn't a way to pull that back. And so I am recommending that we have these as interim uses for maybe the next three, four, maybe five years to sort of let the industry settle and get the clear boundaries of the box kind of around it. And then I think these should be transitioned to conditional use permits at that time, where we would actually make an ordinance amendment and these uses could become conditional uses. But while we're still figuring out the lay of the land, I think interim is going to protect the city better. But I will be honest with you, it is not going to be seen as super business-friendly. And so we add some language to our interim use ordinance explaining why we're identifying these as interim uses. So the use table that you have in front of you, the outdoor cultivation, well, before I, I don't have to read every line of this. Were there any zoning districts that you were unhappy with where you sought? Or zoning districts where you wanted to see it that it was not in? I think it's pretty standard, so we, or I think it's pretty intuitive in terms of where we put it. The only two, the only two locations that the planning commission did ask about was onsite consumption, if we should allow that in the conservancy and the ag, because we are allowing those mezzo and micro businesses and conservancy and ag. Right now, the way that we have conservancy in the agricultural district set up, we would need to change additional things to to really allow them to be able to operate a business there. So that's why we don't allow, we don't allow the onsite consumption because even as it is, the retail of cannabis products is as an accessory use because there really isn't right now, under the code, a way for it to be a principal use. So that can be done, it would just require that we make some changes to those underlying zoning districts as well. So the only places in the whole city that you can do outdoor cultivation are conservancy and agricultural. And then for indoor, it's conservancy, agricultural, and then industrial. And then the manufacturing of these products, you can do that in conservancy and agricultural, B3, BP, and I. So you're heavier use districts. And then the retail can be, retail is going to be the least restrictive. It's allowed in the the B1, the B2, the MU1 and the MU2. And when we talk about that, the retail of low potency hemp edibles, those are already permitted. So we're, we're not regulating those in really any meaningful way in this ordinance.
Amanda, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So I, just with conversation with some people that are looking to get in this business, my understanding is even in a retail situation, if it's downtown or whatever, you will smell an odor from outside. So is there any mitigation on odor that we would be requiring?
Yes, we do have mitigation on odor. So we have, and maybe that's, maybe what we'll do is we'll go, we can talk about some of that.
If I jumped ahead of you, I'm sorry.
No, we can, we we do. So we do have odor, I just want to make sure that I get to the right. Yes, so every application for a business that comes through us as part of the registration process, they need to have an odor mitigation plan that determines, that demonstrates, excuse me, no odors will be detected from the property line or adjacent tenant space if they're located in a multi-tenant building. And that's, my understanding that's been important because if you're in a multi-tenant space and you have odor, it'll circu- through, circulate through the HVAC if that's not something that is specifically called out from day one.
Are those systems known and common? Like, what is an effective, do we have a means of kind of judging what's an effective system? Or that that can be a wide range of solutions? Is there a best practice that we can point to or?
I don't, I think this is still developing. It's not something that staff would have personal knowledge of. There is a business in Stillwater, the name of it is escaping me. It's, it's an, we use them in South St. Paul. It's a, it's a really, it's the best, truly the best odor, not mitigation, but sort of proving out that you you smell bad. They're the best at that. And they have something called the nasal ranger that detects smells and does all that. I think at least initially, we might want to farm out the odor mitigation plan to an expert just to confirm it does work.
Do we have an ability to, to do that, to confirm that, to do that level of, okay?
Yeah, as part of the IUP or the CUP, we would be doing that piece. And on that note, if they violate it or if they're a problem, that would be a condition, right? Of their IUP or that, then you would be, could pull their IUP. I think odor is going to be, odor and security, obviously, we've talked about this. Those are the two biggest issues in, for these businesses. Um, so I already mentioned that planning commission wants to think about maybe future onsite consumption in conservancy and agricultural districts. That was something you wanted now, we would need to change those underlying zoning districts now as well. Am I interested in not now, maybe later kind of a thing? Yeah, okay. So let's talk about distance requirements and we'll come back to that use table. So we have right now that there must be 500 feet between cannabis businesses. And there must also be 500 free, excuse me, 500 feet from schools, commercial daycares, residential treatment facilities and most parks. We did not include Memorial Park because of what happened to the downtown if we included Memorial Park. We did previously show 250 feet, but the planning commission requested 500 to match tobacco and liquor. Each use doesn't have the same things. And by that, I mean, I think liquor has churches and schools, tobacco has schools and parks, and cannabis would have the things in this list. So the lists aren't the same, but then at least the distances would be the same. And that is measured from property line. And so I think you maybe saw in your packet, but this, this first one was the buffers around the different items at 250 feet. And that box is zooming into the downtown. And then this was the buffers at 500 feet. Ultimately, planning commission felt like it needed to be 500. So this is the one that we have now.
What my concern, I, I spent a little bit of time looking at this and I appreciate the reason for a greater distance. My concern of the greater distance is that it pushes the uses from the common sense places that we might want a business of this type. And I guess, I guess that's the question to ask is, does it, do we make the footprint in such a way that it can, just becomes a prohibitor just because of available space? The 500 feet, essentially all of Broadway is, I think, blacked out. And that might be okay, but that's a, that's a decision that 250 does not mean all of Broadway is blacked out.
Mayor Payne, if I might add, staff when consulting with our legal counsel did have that exact discussion, which is why we were proposing a smaller number as a buffer distance. But then maybe increasing the buffer between two businesses so that you had at least a block and a half or so between these different types of cannabis-based businesses. That was one's thought that we had had so that it could help reduce the constant, open it up throughout the community a little bit more, but help reduce that concentration in any one kind of given area in the community.
What does that do for this, the 61 corridor? Can you just?
Do you want to go back to the 250?
Yeah. I mean, it opens up a bigger portion of the 61 corridor. And then specific to 12th?
It opens up most of 12th Avenue as well.
The, the 500, was there some of 12th Avenue that was available of 250?
Excuse me, street.
Or, I'm sorry.
At the 250, it opens up, if you switch, Amanda, if you wouldn't mind switching to the 500, it does take out quite a bit of the, kind of multi-tenant spaces through that area a little bit.
And I, I, I mentioned this with really concern on both sides, right? Like, one is, let's have some common sense places for these businesses to exist. But then also, I too understand the rationale that we don't want the distance to be too close to parks and schools and all of those things. It just happens that the overlap starts, it gets to be a lot of overlap when you have 500. And then if you, we were to consider on top of that, and I think it's also a good idea of distance between business, it just becomes compoundingly more challenging, which might be a strategy. But I, I just don't want us to block out available footprint of what might be a reasonable location to the extent that we want, we're okay with having a couple of well-managed businesses here in town.
This, this ordinance is certainly a work in progress and it's going to take a lot of tweaking along the way, I think. And so that was why I was thinking that the bigger distances would be, where to start and bring it a little closer later on, you know, when we find out what, what kind of issues are going to come up. So that was just kind of my thought on it.
It, so staff's original suggestion was 250. What specifically was cited on, I didn't watch the planning commission meeting. What was specifically was cited by planning commission on going to the 500?
They wanted it to match with tobacco and liquor. It seems odd to to have a higher restriction for tobacco and liquor than for cannabis, which is, is true. One thing that we had talked about, and I think there was interest in that at the planning commission level, and I know we've talked about it at the staff level, is it'd be nice if all these had the exact same rules, right? Tobacco, liquor and, and cannabis. So by that, I mean, they all, they all have the same rules in terms of who, you know, who have to be far away from and how far away from them they have to be. But we don't have that right now.
As I hear you say that and I think about what's different with tobacco and alcohol in particular is we have major retailers that are selling tobacco. Is there, is there a path for major retailers to have cannabis licensing? And I mean, would, would we expect in the near term that there's a day where Holiday and QuickTrip have cannabis licensing? I don't know if they would want to, but should that?
No, probably not.
Difference is there's a, a mass availability of tobacco and alcohol that I see this as just being a smaller scope.
Your mass retailer is probably are not ever going to get into the cannabis game until it becomes legal federally because it's cash only.
Yeah, you're right.
Because of how you have to sell it and and some of those things. I don't see that being, the THC, that, or I should say the hemp-derived, yeah, that's probably already at most of the gas stations in the city.
Right. It's, it's just a availability of products that it makes this question around distance a little bit different than, from a availability standpoint than tobacco and alcohol.
So are you thinking 250 or 500? Now, to be fair, we can go higher. The, the, the state allows you to do up to 1,000 feet. But when we ran the models, that was, I mean, there wasn't any place that would go.
I guess I'd be in favor of 500, start now?
I, I think we can always come back, come off that number if, if we get these requests. I think, starting out, it's just a safer number that we have a little more control about location of some of these.
So keeping the 500 between, or from the, the protected uses and then 500 between the stores?
I'm fine with that for now as well. I, I had the same concern as you, Mayor Payne, because for, if you look at Broadway on this picture, it just, and downtown even too, it just completely almost cuts it out where, where, that's where one would assume you'd see businesses. But the concern with the wanting it to be the same for tobacco and liquor, I think, is a valid concern. So I would be fine going with the 500, and then maybe at a later date, we can, we can, um, come back to that conversation if it's, if we find that it's needed.
Okay.
I think that's wise.
Okay, so then moving to just sort of some of the miscellaneous provisions, extra rules around these uses. There's a bunch of, of rules in the statute around signage. They can't have relief on signs, they can't have super big signs. It, it'll be well under what our signage allowances would allow them to have anyways. Um, our parking requirements are that they have to meet the minimum parking requirements for each type of use. So if you're doing manufacturing, you have to meet a manufacturing, parking use, retail, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, the security plan, they must provide a security plan to the police chief that they, that the police chief will sign off on. Um, and that needs to address, um, security cameras, inside and out, uh, lighting, all, you know, all, all different facets. It's really the exact same plan that they have to provide to the state. It's just, from a safety perspective, it's a good thing for the police to understand what is their, what is their security plan for this building in the event that there is some sort of a robbery or something. As we talked about odor mitigation, so they cannot have odors at the property line or adjacent tenant space if they are in a multi-tenant building. And that will be a condition of their interim use permit. There are some more special rules. If you're outdoor cultivation, if you're outdoor cultivation, the plants need to be set back at least 100 feet from the property line. You need to have six-foot tall perimeter fencing and a screened buffer, and no plants can be visible from the right of way. There are a few cities that are doing a minimum size, uh, property. We chose not to do that because we felt like we could still get what we needed to with these restrictions. Uh, indoor cultivation, so if they're doing a greenhouse, we want that lighting, uh, plan to be approved. Again, we don't want a neighbor to have, you know, lights shining into their property all hours of the day and night. Um, and if you're going to be doing indoor cultivation in the industrial district, you don't get to use greenhouses, hoop houses, or temporary structures. You're putting it up in a big building. Retail hours are going to be from, uh, 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM, so that will match the tobacco shops. Is that right?
Uh, I don't.
Is that matching tobacco?
I don't believe so.
Or liquor? I don't remember.
That's liquor.
Liquor, okay. It's matching liquor stores.
No, I mean liquor's till 10:00 PM, but.
Oh. Not sure why we got nine. We can change these hours if you think they're not long enough.
Should it be consistent with tobacco and, I mean, consistent with tobacco and liquor? I mean, liquor's got a different.
Yeah, it, the liquor hours are regulated by state statute. So, um, I, I don't know, I guess I don't recall if the state had any guidance on retail hours, which might be where, I know that early on, there had been some discussion of till dusk. And so I, that may be where that time came in, I'm not sure.
There is some regulation in the state statute, but it's weird how they did it. It, it, it was like a math problem that you could never solve. So, so that's why, I know that's why we ended up putting it in here. Um, but I think the intention was that it was supposed to match either liquor or tobacco. I just can't remember which one, and maybe we
I don't recall either.
Maybe I missed on both.
I know the tobacco hazard cut off.
I don't, I'm looking at tobacco right now, and, and in my recollection off the top of my head, I don't recall our restrictions, but I'm just pulling up license restrictions right now.
Do you have a preference on ours? Do you want it to match?
It should match liquor.
Well, when we say match liquor, do we mean off-sale hours? Which are different than on-sale consumption? Yes. That seems to make sense to me.
Okay. I'll make sure that that matches. And then it's not allowed in an adult-use business. Um, so additional standards for the more intense cannabis uses, these are going to be the mezzo, the micro, the cultivating, and the manufacturing. So something where there's just more tendency to be a nuisance. All those buildings need to be set back 25, 250 feet from residential zoning districts or residential use. So at least, you know, if you're a home, to be at 250 from, 250 from that. You cannot use exterior storage. This is probably pretty obvious, but we don't want people storing these federally illegal products in outdoor pods or trailers or things that could be easily broken into. Uh, and then your mechanical and odor suppression systems need to be, and trash need to be screened.
Do they also have to submit a security plan around lighting, cameras? You just think about?
Yeah, everybody does.
Okay.
Yep. Um, so Planning Commission feedback, one of the things that was talked about was that they recommended considering limiting your registrations. If you recall, that was something that council was not interested in when we chatted before. Um, so we can cap. If we cap, we need to allow at least one per 12,500 or any partial number of that. So right now with the population in the city, we would need to allow two, a minimum of two, uh, retail, mezzo, or micro businesses. If that's something that council pivots on and decides that we do want that, then that would be put into that registration ordinance that's coming on December 9th. The tricky part with, um, limiting the number is, uh, who gets them? So if you have a, a couple people that come in at about the same time and apply for the license, who are, who are we going to give the registration? Not license, excuse me, registration. Who are we going to be giving the registration to? Um, there's different metrics that some cities have come up with for that process, and so we can certainly do that. But that just opens yourself up to some accusations of arbitrary capriciousness, um, when you're picking, picking between. Um, so that's something to think about if you decide that you want to cap the red, number of registrations. And so that is the, the summary of the ordinance. Is there anything that you wanted to talk about? In terms of the zoning districts, I have, we need to check those hours and make sure that they match liquor off-sale. But other than that, is there anything else?
Do we have a maximum number of off-sale liquor license that we issue or able to issue?
Um, I don't know that our code, hang on, I'm pulling up the number of licenses. Um, 10 is the maximum of off-sale in the city. And I think we're about a little over halfway there right now.
That might be something to consider to match up with, with liquor. Um, you, you talk about the, the cost of entry into this, and are there really going to be 10 and more than 10? And, um, especially with the restrictions at 500 feet? Can you even accomplish that? Just, just a thought to have some kind of a ceiling, I guess?
Yeah, I mean, we've aligned with liquor and several other things, so, I mean, I'd be shocked if we got to that number, but can't hurt to have something in place.
Or is the idea to let it, to go so we don't have to get in that position where we're picking? I mean, I, I can't see it being there, but it could.
How many, um, how many tobacco licenses do we have?
Oh, um.
Any rough?
We have quite a few, because we have the standalone tobacco shops, but then we have all the retail locations, all of the gas stations.
Do you know roughly standalone tobacco shops?
I can pull that up.
What's hard about, I, I, um, I don't think the city wants to be in the position of having to choose applicants. And so I think you're trying to find the, I think a good strategy would be to find the sweet spot of something that's not going to put us in that position, but also something that's going to be a natural governor if something were to all of a sudden, we find ourselves in a situation where there's, you know, 20 in the next year or something. That would just seem to be not likely to happen. And I don't know what that number would be, that would be.
So right now standalone tobacco shops that aren't associated with any retail are at five.
Five. So is the, is the goal to, of, what, maybe, maybe it's good to talk about, what, what would be the goal to limit? What, was it?
Well, probably so you just don't have an unlimited number. We just have some sort of a natural that aligns with other licenses that we.
I think for, for me, what is hard is my opinion on making this new ordinance new to all of us, but not getting feedback from residents. Do they want a limit? Do they want to keep it at 500, 250? We've not had that input, and I don't know if we've had the ability to, how we would get that to, for feedback. Something like this isn't like a, 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 a hearing or public hearing or anything like this.
There is tonight.
This is it tonight?
Yeah, and it, so it was, it was posted as a public hearing. I, I'm not sure if there's anybody here for this public hearing that's about to happen in a couple minutes. But based on the fact that most people have already been up here, I don't think so.
So I, you know, just keep it, something to limit from being the Wild, Wild West, which I don't think we'd get there. Um, and to align with our alcohol license seems to make sense, but.
Was there a suggested number that staff considered? Um, did you talk about that, and was there a recommendation that maybe?
I don't believe we did, because the direction from you is that you didn't want to limit it.
Yeah, we did, that is where we started.
You provided that very specific direction.
That is where we started.
You did, but we did talk about, okay, we don't want 15 downtown. And so one of the ways was to limit between the businesses. And so when you've got 500 feet between them, there's just a limit to how many get to be there. Um, and then you pop in those, that 500 distance requirements, and so we felt like we're already kind of restricting the universe for where these shops can go. And then keep in mind statewide, we're getting 125. Uh, so.
It's probably a non.
So we're just not going to get that money because there's, and that's assuming that they're able to give out all of the licenses and that there's a lot of, I'm not optimistic there's going to be, you know, cannabis shop popping up on every corner anywhere in the near future.
It's probably a self-governing number, right?
I think it's kind of an expensive endeavor too, isn't it, to get started?
It's very expensive to get started, yeah. This is not going to be an easy thing to undertake.
Back also.
It's something, you know, so, so if we didn't, if council did not select a number to limit, I would imagine, you know, these licenses get issued, we have some, you know, time of operation. We start to understand what's working, what's not working. Is this a ordinance we could adjust, you know, a year in, two years in fairly easily? Um, I guess the, the sensitivity at that point is that's probably not going to be a time where you're going to claw back licenses. Um, those licenses have, are out there, people have made those investments. Um, so it's hard to contract the market, but maybe can slow future expansion if there were things that council didn't like.
Yeah, I anticipate that this ordinance will need to be changed just in the next year or two as OCM builds out what they actually look like and, you know, all those things. So yes, you definitely could add that. The other pieces, that's just another example of why I'm doing, I want them to be interim uses. So that way you're not, so the, the business understands, we're, we're totally willing to test this, but we can't promise you that this is going to work forever. So that's the other, the nice thing about that. And I, I apologize, I don't think I included a slide on this, and I should have. The concept is the interim use permit. It's just like a conditioning permit, but it has a date specific that it expires, right? And the date specific is when they no longer have a license with OCM. So essentially, as long as they keep a valid license with OCM, they get to continue to operate. It's if that license were to be, you know, removed or expired or whatever. So they can't transfer it to a, a, a new license holder. That person would have to come in and get their own IUP. Um, but that is actually somewhat standard in some other industries and, you know, other cities. So I think, I'm hopeful that if there's a legitimate applicant out there that comes to staff, staff can explain it in a way that isn't so scary that they don't want to, you know, invest in the city, but they can hopefully appreciate why for right now it really should be an interim use permit.
That's a good.
Sorry, I should have, I apologize. I should have had a slide on that. Um, so the next steps are to open a public hearing on the cannabis zoning use ordinance. This was published, like, I don't know, a couple weeks ago, we published it early. Um, that this was going to be talked about tonight. Um, and then we can move on what the next steps would be from there, but if you want, we want to open a public hearing, I can sit down.
Perfect. Let's do that. Um, let's open a public hearing at this time. Is there anybody that would like to speak to council specifically on the topic of cannabis zoning use ordinance, and public hearing is open.
Jamie Deichman again, uh, 56 Seventh Street Northwest. Just on limiting the licenses, uh, we might find the right words. We might like to limit the number of retail locations differently than, say, cultivation. You know, agricultural is going to be a lot less, uh, interface than a retail location. But also, as far as the distance between, I don't see the difference between having two shops right next door to each other, as long as they're in a business area, not near a school, as opposed to spreading them out throughout the entire, uh, city. So, I mean, once they're here, the damage is done. Or not, you know, hopefully not. But, you know, two locations next door, not that big a deal. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in public hearing? Anybody online, Jolene?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Anyone else? Not seeing anyone come forward. We'll close public hearing and bring conversation back to council.
So just quick point of clarification, Your Honor. Um, yes, the only licenses that you can limit are those retail licenses or the mezzo-micro businesses. Um, you can't limit egg, you can't limit, or you can't limit, excuse me, cultivation, you can't limit manufacturing, wholesale. All of those businesses you may not, it's just the licenses that have the retail component. So, but essentially, if you can sell it to the public, you can be limited. If you can't sell it to the public, you don't get to be limited.
Mayor Payne, if I also can just make a point of clarification for the record, the comment earlier was the concern of distance between businesses. I've worked in two other states that have passed marijuana, or, that's not the word we use, is it?
Cannabis.
Cannabis. Um, laws before, and unfortunately, in both of those states, they started to see high concentrations of the businesses together, which then, um, if it wasn't necessarily legitimate businesses, increased the unseatedness that can sometimes come with businesses like this. Um, so not to say that that was necessarily the circumstance that's going to happen here in Minnesota. Um, certainly don't want that necessarily enforced, like, but spreading it out through the community, we thought could help reduce some of those potentially negative impacts that could occur with, um, the legalization of cannabis. I think the whole room said cannabis. I'm not sure why.
So what I'm looking for now for next steps is if you approve the ordinance in its current form, um, then I would be looking for a motion to approve the ordinance. If you, um, want to just approve it with having hours match liquor, we could just do that as part of the motion tonight and still approve the ordinance. If there is more whole cloth, uh, changes that you want to the ordinance, then I would ask you to make a motion to continue this to the December 9th meeting. And so there, there's two choices for you there, um, on the screen. And then on that December 9th, you'll have the registration ordinance, which is not going to be very exciting.
Thank you, Amanda. Council, ready for action, or additional questions that you may have?
I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance enacting Forest Lake City Code 153.096 outlining the regulations of cannabis businesses with the modification of the hours as discussed.
Very good. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second it.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, and motion carries.
I'm Amanda.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, there was also included in your packet of resolution for summary publication of that ordinance. I just ask if council could take a look at that. Um, it is a lengthy ordinance, so we're trying to save some costs here by publishing a summary.
Is this, um, the, um, is it on page 187 of our packet?
I believe so. I'm just trying to scroll. My computer's freezing up.
Yes.
It is.
I move that council approve Resolution 11252402, authorizing summary publication of ordinance 744 in ordinance enacting Forest Lake City Code.
I'll second.
As described on our resolution. And we, so motion, and we have a second from Councilmember Valento. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, and motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification, Jolene. Okay, um, next item on our agenda, the Okay, next item on our agenda this evening, consideration of 7C, which is the snow and ice control policy. This is a pickup of the conversation that council had in our last workshop. We'll give just a moment. Dave, floor is yours when you're ready.
Boy, I cleared the room, I thought this would be more.
You are.
If you ever would want to stick your own.
Popular guy.
At Mayor Bean's point, we talked about this at length at the workshop last week. It was, notice that I missed the part about this increased removal of the snow berm along Highway 61. I know it was a council direction or a want in like March of last year, I just failed to, to enter that in there. So on the analysis part, you can see we added some language in there just to spell out that Highway 61, the berm removal will be just more of a priority for for hazardous conditions provided for improved pedestrian and parking accommodations. It just may result in increased snow removal, different than any parts of the city, just so that kind of spells it out of why did the city come down here and more, or not more, remove the snow two times last month and my street hasn't had the snow removal, at least we have something to go back to of, that's kind of our, our policy, so. That is what I came with out of the last workshop. If there's any other discussion, otherwise just looking to approve that snow and ice control policy with that updated language.
Very good, thanks Dave. Council, open it up, feedback? Thoughts on ordinance policy, or, sorry, ordinance, the policy as stated? I think we're looking for, looking for action tonight. Dave, I appreciate you adding in the extra, extra clarification related to the berm removal. Also, for those that are following in the public, we've kind of made it part of our policy, the public nuisance option related to abatement. For those properties that are, have chronically had challenges and complaints on snow removal, this provides an opportunity for us to take care of that and essentially give those property owners a subscription service to sign on to essentially an abated service for that snow removal as needed, so. I, so I'm, I'm happy to support the policy as we have it today. Any other discussion?
You know, we're making progress on this policy by including the berm removal that's been talked about for the last couple of winters. I still don't think this policy is where it should be. And we had discussion about that at the last workshop. There's just been, you know, some new information that I've learned looking closer at the map, that I just have questions about that I think we should workshop it some more before we, or before I'm able to support it.
Do you want to table tonight and bring it back for further discussion? Is that?
That'd be my preference.
Any other, are we, in, in doing so, it snows a pile between now and that next workshop, we're kind of following current policy, would be what we're doing if, until we change the policy, just so we're clear. I'm hap, I'm happy to bring this into another workshop if that's what's needed.
Me personally, I was happy with the policy as it is. I don't know if another workshop would help, I didn't, I missed the last one, but I did read through this thoroughly.
As, as it's written right now, I wouldn't support it. I think I was pretty clear at the workshop that I think downtown, our goal to have a more walkable downtown should require snow removal. We are doing certain areas that we've learned since the workshop, that in some of some commercial areas that, that we weren't aware of. So I wouldn't support it at this point until downtown was included.
I, so questions, so for those that may be watching and kind of wondering the consternation here. The topic has been expanding the plow foot, or the, the snow removal footprint to include more of the pedestrian areas of downtown. And personally, I would prefer that we have a season with, of seeing the abatement policy in effect. I appreciate that the goal is to have a walkable downtown. And with the policy and the new tools in place around abatement, we have some tools to do that for those property owners that continue to not follow those rules. I am really concerned about city subsidizing that and us just taking care of it. Personally, I, I think it subsidizes bad behavior. And our downtown redevelopment is going to require strong partnership with those property owners. And that means you've got to, you've got to, you know, do your part and take care of your, your property. And for us to just take that on when we have another means of subs, or another means of paying through abatement, I think we, we were better served overall in taking that approach. But if this requires some more discussion, we can certainly table and have that at a later time. Anyone ready to make, maybe let's just ask, is anyone ready to make a motion to approve tonight? Are not seeing a, not seeing a motion come forward. That is no action. And it can come on to a future agenda, whether that's a council meeting agenda for further action or I know, it sounds like it's probably heading towards another workshop, for another workshop topic.
Well, for the sake of argument, for the sake of argument, I'll make a motion that we approve the, the policy as it's written.
We have a motion to approve as written, is there a second? I'll second for purposes of discussion. Any discussion? Anything that's not been said already? Not hearing any discussion, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Three ayes, two nays, motion carries. Okay, we can move into our next topic this evening, which is the added agenda item related to planned discussion related to the 2025 budget. So I had a conversation with council member Roberts on the topic of budget. And we're just talking about where we are for budget and the information that's been prepared so far. And thinking about our upcoming meeting, the truth and taxation meeting that is on December 9th, and also the proposed levy vote that will happen that evening. Just talking through, what information do we have? Does council have all of the information that we need to answer resident questions that might be coming up between now and then? And so that kind of led me to put this discussion item on the agenda. Because I think there, there's a couple of pieces of information that it would be helpful for council to have between now and the 9th, and potentially depending on what that information shows, we may want to schedule a special working session sometime next week. We do still have a couple of weeks before that levy meeting. And I think, just to summarize, the, the two pieces that I think are still outstanding is, one, understanding where we are today for estimated 2024 budget surplus. We know that we have a number of key positions that are still unfilled. And we know that generally we are in a surplus position for 2024, which is great. But because the topic is specifically on the agenda, or because there is a specific line item related to surplus planning is part of the levy for 2025, I think the question is where are we for 2024? And what options may council have, considering that now we are, you know, four to five weeks before the end of the year? We know that that's going to be an estimate, but seeing where we are for 2024 planned, budget surplus would be good. And then where does that mean we fall around our, our policy around 50% surplus? Are we hitting at 51, are we hitting at 55, 56? I, I don't know off the top of my head. It's been a while since council saw that. And I think that those would be two important data points. Because that tells us where are we for 2024 from a budget standpoint. It also tells us that surplus number is always kind of the cumulative number of past budget decisions. Where are we an overall? And again, specific because part of the 2025 levy is to fund that margin. Let's just be clear on where we are for 2024. So I think that's helpful for us then to talk about, and also to talk to the public around what's being asked for, for that particular budget item in 2025. So that's helpful. Also, we, in our workshop, we had a discussion around public safety dollars. But I think it'd be also helpful just to see an updated worksheet. At one time, there was a preliminary list. I think there's maybe been some additional discussion at the staff level. To just see that list again and talk about what that means for near-term property or, or near-term equipment purchases in 2025. I think just gives us a longer perspective on how we're using those public safety dollars. Because that's also another topic that's routinely coming up in resident feedback. And so having those two data points would be helpful. And then again, depending on where we are with those data points, I think we might be wise to look for some time next week for a special meeting. I'd rather frankly have a special meeting next week than hold off passing the levy on the 9th. I'd rather us do the work to get the information sooner rather than later. But I'd like to be able to see it, what those numbers look like before we decide, gosh, do we need to have a special meeting? I'd like to, you know, so, with council member Roberts and I in the position of the interim committee with Jolene, I'd like council to give us the ability to kind of, the two of us meet with Jolene. Especially Kevin's not here this evening, once Kevin's been able to, to, you know, take a look at this request. And then the three of us decide, should we have a special meeting? Or is it something that we can just provide to council with some information from Kevin? I'd like us to be able to make that call if council's open to us doing that. Is that fair?
I have just one vote, fine with me.
I think, I'm not sure if there were other budget items that we wanted to talk about this evening, but certainly I felt like it was a little bit of a different, or additional direction or a different, different level of specificity than what we had talked about in the workshop. And so certainly wanted to get it on the agenda tonight so that certainly can bring in anybody else's thoughts as to additional information that would be helpful. I just did a lot of talking, let's open it up. Anyone else have any thoughts? Did I do okay summarizing?
I believe so, I appreciate, mayor, that you're taking that extra step and looking at, at it. It's important, we owe that to the residents. And, you know, there's ability to look at those, a couple of those different areas and potentially get that down a little bit. I think that we owe that to the residents to at least look at that, so. I appreciate your willingness to do that.
I will say, you, you did just mention get that down a little bit. I, I think part of the discussion and council needs to remember, even if we identify those levy pieces, some of that might be a less fund to the general fund. Some of that though might be taking those dollars and reallocating to the park fund or some of the other funds that we've also, throughout this budget process, have made some reductions on. I think we should keep an eye on that as well. It might be as much a reallocation as it is a reduction. Ultimately, council can decide it's a, a reduction, that is certainly something we can do. But I don't want to signal that I'm thinking this is a reduction. I keep going back to that park number that, we've, we've whittled that away throughout this year. And if we don't need it for surplus, I, I still think we should really consider some additional park funding, so. Hence, let's get the information in front of us so we know what margins we're talking about. Anything else as we're thinking about budget and what would be helpful? Jolene, do you think you have enough specificity for Kevin?
I do, thank you.
Chief, I know I just put you on the spot a little bit with public safety dollars, does that make sense? What we're asking for?
Yeah, it does, and I've already been compiling a list for you. And of course, with the discussion and the late addition to it, I don't have it available for you, but I can definitely have it available for you early next week, for sure.
Perfect. I know we're in a short week with the holidays, so if we could, perhaps Monday, Tuesday-ish, if we're going to have a special meeting next week, we're going to have to notice it fairly soon. So we can talk about what that timing looks like. Julie, maybe also wise to get some availability from council for next week?
Yeah, I can send out a, a survey of sorts to get some dates and times that folks would be available next week.
All right. Should we move into staff updates? Jolene?
Sounds good. Just a reminder, City Hall is going to be closed Thursday and Friday in observance of Thanksgiving. Also here at City Hall on Thursday, the Rotary Club will be hosting their annual turkey trot. So if you feel like running to burn off some calories in advance of Thanksgiving dinner, you can certainly still sign up on their website. And that would be it for my updates tonight.
Very good, thank you. Abby?
Just two updates, I did send in one of our kind of end of the week updates for you, the council, but wanted to note publicly that we have a number of development inquiries. We have six residential subdivisions in the inquiry stage. Two of them in concept plan stage. One multifamily residential, and then three non-residential, so redevelopment projects, so commercial projects. So we are kind of potentially gearing up for a busy 2025 planning and construction season. And then also hometown holiday next Friday, December 6th, 4:30 to 6:30. I think I'll let you know that we had an abundance of volunteers, everything's kind of coming together. So hopefully you all come down, the tree lighting's at 6:45 and customarily the whole council's there. So see you guys down there.
So we have a tradition of, of full council doing the tree lighting, which I hope we can continue this year. And also, I'm saying this out loud so I remember, I will also invite new council members to join us as well.
Oh, yes, I will note that our new council member-elect Jeff Johnson did actually recruit about a third of our volunteers.
Fabulous.
Bringing them to hometown holiday, so. Hope all of you can come down, you wouldn't be slotted in as volunteers, but you could enjoy the event. But we would slot you in anywhere, man a bonfire, hand out candy canes or something if you wanted.
Good, good to see he's already getting to work, excellent. Dave?
Just a couple of updates, as you probably saw in the weekly update. Belts Park, crews are starting to tear down the playgrounds and remove the mulch. The DNR did approve the updated site plan with the pedestrian facilities. You approved tonight plans and specs to start going through that. So hopefully we will get it all removed by, by wintertime. And Bolton, I can myself will get plans and hopefully bid that out and get it all put together next spring slash summer, so. The other last thing is the compost site is open on Wednesday at the last one of the year and maybe forever. Washington, Washington County site will be opening in December. So it's customary for us to close that Wednesday before Thanksgiving, so. As long as Washington County can, can take care of it, then we'll, we'll pass the baton and let them run the compost site around this, these parts, so. It's the only two updates I have.
Nice, my last one.
Just one question, Dave, so is there a expected savings in the budget on giving that on to the county, the compost?
There, we'll see that probably maybe a year from now. We still have to do the full site cleanup, so we have it priced in there for closing out that permit. The one problem is, is we keep taking in ash trees and with our new right-of-way policy, we're probably going to end up bringing them there as well and storing our ash trees there. So it may take a while, we might just use that as our tree pile. And then as funds come available, we'll keep chipping it down. We used to be able to get rid of the chips for free, but now, now we have to pay for it. So it's going to be a little slower process to get rid of them.
Is it, you have to pay for it because of the ash?
No, so District Energy used to take them for free to burn them down in St. Paul. And their contract expired and they didn't renew the contract to take it, so. I mean, now it's paying market price, you can get some better deals if you have bigger chunks of wood and all that. It's not really the ash or anything else, it's just, there's nowhere to bring it, bring it for free anymore. It's not worth somebody coming and taking and using their fuel. So, yeah.
Thank you.
But prior to the ash tree thing, that there was some savings, because we, we haul all those leaves, right? I mean, wasn't there some hauling savings along the way there?
We took all that money and just kind of buried it into operations, so it wasn't really a line item under compost. The only compost site we had was to pay the intended. And we, I think we had up between $5,000 and $10,000 in the year, just in case we needed to pay for certain removals, or, you know, if there was a mess we needed to clean up. So I think I left, I took, well, we took the staffing out, which is probably about $10,000 savings in '25. There's still $10,000 in there that was planned for the cleanup, but I don't think we're going to do the cleanup. We'll just keep that as a tree, tree waste site for us for the interim.
Chief Peterson?
Yeah, last week, we had a really good turnout for the senior scams presentation at the senior center. I just want to thank ARP and Forest Lake Lions Club for their assistance at that presentation, and all the presentations throughout the year. And then I also want to welcome our two new police officer hires, Jeremy Pelter and Jake Wenzman, who started today. And that's all I have for you.
Excellent.
No updates.
Very good. Amanda? And Ryan?
Mayor City Council, no updates unless you have any questions?
Councilmember Erickson?
I just want to mention that downtown looks great today with the trees and the road about and all the Christmas decor, I really appreciate that, and then I'm running the 5K on Thursday, so.
Good luck for you. Okay, not running. Councilmember Hesnick?
No updates, thank you.
Councilmember Valento?
No updates.
Councilmember Roberts?
Nothing to see here.
Nothing further from me, otherwise, other than just wishing everybody a fabulous and safe Thanksgiving week, and look forward to seeing everybody, we've got, still got some work to do this year, and so look forward to some productive meetings here coming up in December.
There's enough, we need a special meeting.
Yeah, certainly. Notification will come from Jolene.
That is the end of our planned agenda, I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
I said a motion to approve, motion to adjourn, thank you, we've got a motion to adjourn and a second, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? And we're adjourned. Thank you all.